Questions for Mr. Drager.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of Westville Lake, private security's been hired?
Well, I wouldn't call it exactly private security. We have a part-time there who makes where the rounds.
What hours do they work?
Well, they vary.
Yeah.
He makes rounds daily and multiple times on the weekends.
We have, we have water department employees clearing the land out there.
Clearing the land?
Or cutting trees and...
Doing some clearing out there.
Clearing.
Yeah.
Are those employees only paid by the water department fund?
Yes.
Do you think there's...
At least I'd be expecting that.
Do you think there's going to be enough money generated from the fees to pay for this?
Paid for...
Paid for the employees clearing the land for security?
For the security, yeah, for the, for the mowing that we have to do there, we think so. There's, there's quite a few expenses that go with operating the campgrounds. We're hopeful. We're trying. We think it's going to minimize. We think that in the end what we have to put in is cheaper than if we had no presence out there. But it remains to be seen on that. Some of the things that we're doing, we're responsible due both as the property owner and also because it's a dam. We think it's going to minimize the loss to it.
When, also, we're building some docks too?
We replaced two docks. There are two points of access. There's, there's basically three lakes there. They're divided by Westville and Case roads. You can't get from Lake One, which would be the lake that is east of Case road, into Lake Two and Three. So it has a dock, a ramp to get to it itself. Two and Three, you can get into from the same road but on the other side. So again, you can't, you can't converse.
So these can traverse? Like public docks then?
They're ramps to put boats in. There are docks as you would normally have where you put your boat in and then you can tie up while you move your car and trailer back out of the way.
So these won't be for the permanent residents out there?
Well, we don't really... Are you talking about the canvers or...?
No, I'm talking about the residents of the lake.
Yeah, generally anybody needs to put a boat in. We'd have to have the boat ramp in order to get a boat in or out of the, of the lake.
But if their boat's already there tied up to their dock, then it's there all sunk. But to put it into the lake, then they have to do story?
Yeah, and to take it out at the end.
Is there fees terms for this?
For the ramp, no, it goes with the boat, with licensing the boat. So there is a fee structure there.
The incident where the hydraulic spill came about, that was because of a piece of our equipment?
Hose broke on a backhoe.
Mm-hmm. And then the EPA was called on that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
But there was, there was nothing then that was needed to be done?
Well, there were actions that we took. They didn't require any follow-up actions, but there were a lot of actions that we took. We've kind of got a little experience with this. So a lot of the things we did probably are unusual of what we would see.
So we, in other words, we try to clean it up ourselves, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, and you, and containment, we do a lot of things for containment right away. For example, creating a low area where the water can go back to. We keep a pretty good res, our inventory of oil spill equipment. I don't know if you're aware, but Walborn Reservoir is a hydraulic system. So we have about 1,000 gallons of hydraulic oil. It is part of that system.
The gauge here?
Yeah, there, there's three hydraulic cylinders there in a large capacity. So we keep a good inventory there. We've had some leakage there, so we're kind of used to it. But basically, there, if the volume was slow, was low enough, and the things we did, there's nothing subsequent that we had to do.
So that's what they found then too? They were all right with the EPA?
Yeah, I'm not sure that the EPA has even made a visit. Basically, what happens, and it's pretty typical with us, it goes back about 20 years or so, 25 years. When we have something like that, is that we generally go through the fire chief to make the notifications primarily because he's more familiar with it. Has a, you know, a relationship with it. Generally speaking, if it's, are people involved in it, they're trying to do mitigation and control things at the same time. In this case, because we're in Westville, there's other jurisdictions that quite frankly, we wouldn't have known. So one of the things in going through Jason is that it made it very easy for us to let North Georgetown know, to let Sebring know, to let the EPA know. So he handled the initial notifications to them. Once the notifications are made, EPA, their spill unit normally will follow up with you. I'm pretty sure he made, I'm pretty sure he made Doug the contact when he talked to them and gave Doug's information. So then they get back to whoever you have handling the cases, is the way that works. So they then follow up and want to know the things you've done. Couple of things about it that were advantageous was that the lake was drained to a normal and lower level, so there's nothing going with the spillway. It's kind of used containment within the lake. But then again, because we had the materials, we did, one of the things we did is we put containment up even downstream of that just to be sure of that. The other thing we do is, one of the things we did very quickly is figure out what is the capacity of the vehicle? How much could you have leaked? Which I think it was around 15 or 16 gallons.
So like if you'd leaked when nobody was there, so what happened?
No, they were there. The hose broke. No, what you want to know was what's the worst to do? I mean, the EPA right away wants to know, are we talking about five gallons, 50 gallons? What is it? And of course, you don't know. You just know your hose broke at that point. So the first thing we do is then find out, you know, through, basically through the garage, what is the capacity? Which was about 16 gallons. So you know what the potential of spill is. And then in follow-up, when you replace the oil, you have a real good idea of how much was lost, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Drager?
Yeah, I've got some questions on the same subject. First of all, which of those lakes had that hazmat experience?
Uh, it would be Lake One and Lake Two, right in that, in that area. It'd be right at Case Road.
Okay. And did you get to hear the phone conversations went back and forth over that?
No.
I did. And frankly, maybe the fire chief wants to do that, but Hastings tried to call off the fire chief.
I don't believe that's what you heard indicated there. I mean, I've, I've heard about that. I've heard that purported. Here's, here's what I know to happen, and I have the chiefs, the chiefs reported more. Hastings called the chief directly. He was talking to him and was arranging for, for Jason to contact the EPA. His phone went dead. He thought it was near the end of his conversation. For Jason, it was, for Chief Hunt, it was enough near the end, but he took it that way and he went ahead and made his notifications. With Hastings' phone dead, they didn't have Jason's number for somebody else so that they could follow up and see where it was. So what he did is he had one of his employees there call the dispatch so they could get the chief's number and he could resume his conversation with him. I think what you're, what you're misinterpreting is are him not wanting dispatch to make the notifications because we've already arranged for the chief to do it. And again, we've done that going back about 25 years.
And I asked the EPA what, you know, if they got the response. First of all, I'd be nice if we could hear. This, this is northeastern Ohio. Sebring just had a major problem with their water. You know, they got somebody who may be going to jail over this whole thing. And we have an incident at Westville that is obviously a political issue right now. And, and you don't tell us anything about it. So we get to find out on our own. Which, first of all, as, as I mentioned to you about Westville last time, that's terrible communication, Mike. Terrible.
Well, you know, I mean, you go to...
And then, so nobody finish, Mike.
Sure.
So I, so I gotta do my own digging. So I get hold of EPA and I say, hey, what's going on with this? And they, they basically said, well, the, the fire chief called us and he told us what was going on. But then we got called off by Chief Hastings. And I said, who?
Who?
Chief Hastings. Well, and that's exactly what these reports indicate. Chief Hastings called him off. Now, maybe their people aren't very good at determining who calls to report violations and who calls to say it's minimal, we got under control. I don't know. But I think this needs to be looked at a little more carefully. It, we... It, it looks sloppy to me. And it's unfortunate, but sloppy is a word that I've been using in, in city government lately. Because things just aren't going as they're supposed to. How, how is, how is the EPA assuming we have a Chief Fire, a Fire, Chief Hastings? How is this?
That's their report. I, I don't know how they're making such an assumption. I, I know the report that we followed up with. I know the report we made to them. I haven't seen that. I don't know what you're talking about.
You ought to look at it.
I'm...
God, how many times it says Chief Hastings in that report?
Okay. Well, I'm going to assume that whoever started it that way continued to make it that way.
Does Doug have the ability to call the EPA and check behind Chief Hunt?
Yeah, actually, he could have made the report. It is typical policy for the way we do it.
Well, it was reported by Chief Jason Hunt on this, on this...
Okay.
I think this is page one. I didn't, that's not good up there.
And then...
But, but other contacts were Chief Doug Hastings with his phone number. See, right here.
Oh, it says Chief.
Right, it does. Now, that, that's somebody who typed this into making assumption. I, I, I don't believe that Doug Hastings identified himself as a fire chief. And I, and I don't, I would hope not, and I don't know why we would accuse him of that. You, you know as well as I do that as, as you get reports and information passed, people can make bad assumptions. Why are we assuming it wasn't the EPA that made that?
This is a question, not an accusation. But I have more questions along that subject.
Then I have a question. We're talking about policies procedure for the EPA. If something goes wrong, Doug Hastings called the chief and told him what the situation was. So the chief in turn, being the chief of, fire chief, he calls the EPA. A chain of command so that somebody might misconstrue and type Chief Hastings on a sheet of paper. Then we, as administration, needs to change that chain of command. You said it's been done for 20 something years. Then if there's a problem, they initiate it and found the problem. Let just one person deal with the EPA instead of two?
It, it doesn't work that way with the EPA's policy. And the reason we have the chief notify is to make sure that it was done correct. And I believe if you follow up with EPA, you will find that all of the notifications were proper and in accordance with their rules. They want a contact person to follow up with to know what is going on at the scene and what are the efforts being done. And that happened. And that happened to be Doug Hastings.
Well, here's, here's what I'd like to...
Doug can tell the chief and one person?
I'm sorry, what?
So that it won't be, no, it's not answered? I, I heard what you said, but as protocol, so that there won't be a lack of communication between the three entities? Chief, Hastings?
I'm not aware of any lack of communication. We're talking about somebody has a title that doesn't belong to him. I don't believe he gave that as his title, but they clearly, there was some misunderstanding. I don't know how it's germane.
So that it won't be a misunderstanding? Can't Doug give the chief the information so that one person's talking with the EPA?
We, we did do that. There is then follow-up information where they need to follow up with the people that are at the scene and what the efforts that happened.
I think you made your point. Chief, Drager, do you have anything?
Well, you know, and, and so, you know, I, as I think about these things, I, I, I just get a little bit concerned. And you know, I've asked you, does Doug Hastings live in Ohio? And you said he stays at his parents' house. And it was kind of funny because I heard last meeting that we paid $4,000 for a new policy manual. One of the things on the policy manual says that you can't operate a city vehicle without an Ohio driver's license. Does our, our water distribution superintendent have an Ohio driver's license?
I do not know that.
How can you not know that? Don't we, don't we cover him with insurance? Don't we give him a vehicle to take home? Don't we have a rule that says you must? Isn't he in the room?
Yes, he is.
Can we find out?
Yes.
Hold on. All right. State your question again so we know what...
Does he have an Ohio driver's license?
All right, let me hear it better. What do you have to add, Doug?
No.
Another one? No, put the end.
Again, isn't this a little bit sloppy, Mike?
I, I'm not aware of the policy.
Water distribution superintendent. That's a department head. That's a guy we got to rely on to bring good water to our residences to make sure that we drink. We sit up here, we get water reports all the time, but we don't hear about the hazmat situation at Westville Lake. And we don't know that, that we have, for how many months have we had a water superintendent that does not live in Ohio?
He does live in Ohio.
If he lives in Ohio, then he's driving without a license, Mike. Because you can't keep, you can't be here for 18 months and have a Florida driver's license. That's the law. I'm sorry.
Any questions that you have?
Yeah, I think maybe, hold on one second. Well, no, but I would like to, I would like to do this. I'm asking you formally to do this. I think that there are seven recorded messages at the Alliance Police Department that were, maybe there's only six, I don't know, six or seven? That went back and forth over this thing, this spill. And I'd like you to come back next meeting and report on what really happened in those phone conversations. And if you could, or I could ask the police department, can you contact EPA and find out? How did they come up with the title of Chief Hastings as opposed to Water Superintendent Hastings? And, and, I mean, it almost sounds to me, and I, I'm just in an accusation, Mike, but I'm just trying to figure this whole thing out. Because you don't tell me, was he the operator of the backhoe? Did he, was it his spill? Did he call and say, we don't need you?
I don't believe so, but I can, I can ask him that. Were you running the backhoe? No, he wasn't.
Okay, so I don't know.
But I mean, typically, it wouldn't be a backhoe operator that would cause a hose to break like that.
And, and see, I don't know, because that's not my world.
All right. Other questions that you have?
So you want me to listen to the, you say there are six, six or seven conversations?
Five minutes your day. It won't take you too long.
Six or seven, and this is all to dispatch?
Yeah. Yeah, dispatch is the... Well, that's what I'm asking him. We, we...
So what's that?
Why was it council notified?
That we have, that we had a hydraulic line break?
Mm-hmm. This potential liability, shouldn't we know?
We got embarrassed by Westville Lake residents a couple of meetings ago, Mike.
Last month.
Don't, don't you think that we should have a right to be able to understand?
Well, I do, you know? And again, when you, you tell me that we're, you're embarrassed and you don't get informed, but you know very well that the committee that oversees that had a long report on the issues there. You know that I, you and I had a long phone conversation about that before the meeting. I had a meeting with you. Actually, Ms. King is the only person...
You told me in the hallway.
Wait, wait, don't interrupt. Let Mr. Drager finish you.
No, we actually stepped out of the hallway into another room. I told you what's going on. And, and you got whatever information you wanted. You basically told me you weren't concerned.
You told me that there were some people there that you was going to talk to about actually the permits and the fees that's going to be charged.
I told you, I told you very, very specifically.
When I came here, these people came and told us a, a whole nother story. I had egg on my face.
I told you that there were people not happy because there were changes at Westville and that they would be coming to the meeting.
You said it's been going on for two or three years. I thought it was just current.
Ms. Cherry, win. I, you're losing the conversation. We're going to each talk at our own time.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Give an answer that you had, Mr. Drager, and then I will throw it back to you.
Um, and yes, I can inform you of those things. It's not a problem. This is not a spill that really reaches a level in my mind. The, the reporting was fine. The containment was fine. The follow-up reports were there. This is not an unusual thing to have happen. I don't have a problem telling you these things. And as you all know, I believe quite well, I'm available to you. I don't know anybody here who has not been able to get me to return their calls and answer a few of the questions if you want to know anything about them. And quite frankly, you're saying, I'm not letting you know the Westville's fill. But the last call that I've made to you, you've never returned my calls since then.
Last text I made to you, you didn't return.
Okay, we're not going to get into that today.
Attempted to.
All right. Any other questions?
Attempted to, but you didn't, you didn't take my call. Be happy to explain it.
All right. Drager, meeting's end question.
Yes, Mr. Drager, I'd like to discuss your role in the city's execution of contracts. You've disseminated very specific policy regarding contracts for goods and services, right?
I'm sorry, we have to be more specific with your...
Well, I was going through Board of Control minutes from the last five years, more than five years. And out of one of the binders fell an internal memo that you sent to all department heads on January 16th, 2015. The very first paragraph is, "There have been some recent difficulties and confusion with respects to contracts for goods and services. As a result, this memo is intended to establish guidelines for all of us to follow." Do you remember that document?
Mm-hmm, I know exactly, yes, what it was about. I don't remember the, what follows, but go ahead.
Okay.
But I know what precipitated it.
Well, you did that because of difficulties and confusion. That's accurate?
Yeah, specifically, I did it because we had a bid and a contract awarded, and the contract had not been approved by Board of Control.
Okay. And you signed a document from Baker-Dublecar, Beck, Wiley &amp; Matthews, correct?
I probably signed a lot of them.
Well, you just signed one 10 days ago, right?
Are you talking, yes.
Okay, and you're familiar with the contents of this document, right? So you know that this document states, "Dear Ms. Arnold, thank you for selecting Baker-Dublecar, Beck, Wiley &amp; Matthews to represent the City of Alliance in connection with investigation regarding certain police actions. This letter confirms our agreement as to the terms of engagement." So who negotiated the terms of engagement?
The law director.
Well, if you signed this document, why were they negotiating with the law director?
Because she had a familiar area with, with the firm, and the price was a little bit... But it's, it's my, my job to enter the agreement.
So who selected Baker-Dublecar?
Formally, it would be me.
Then why did Baker-Dublecar write, I'm sorry. Why did Baker-Dublecar write a letter to Ms. Arnold thanking her for selecting them if you selected them?
Again, formally, it becomes my selection when I sign that. Ms. Arnold is the one who, who made the original checks for a firm. She's the one who, who recommended that firm to the man or not.
Who determined that this expenditure was necessary? You were the law director?
Me.
You did. So contrary to your policy that the department head should make a determination about an expenditure being necessary?
I'm sorry, what's that?
In, in your policy that was distributed to department heads, it says that the department head is to make the determination that an expenditure is necessary. But you're saying you made that determination?
Well, I am a department head.
What department are you in charge of that would determine whether or not that expenditure was necessary?
Safety and service.
And how does, so when you write a, a letter to department heads, you're writing that to yourself as well?
To some degree. They all are agents for the safety service director, yeah.
And there's no specific department, like the law department, that would make that determination?
That's separate from safety and service.
So what was the law director's role on this?
To help us find a firm.
And how did she go about doing that? If, if she was doing this in conjunction with you, to your knowledge?
How did she do that?
Yes.
By, I think, going through, well, I'll let her explain.
Well, I consulted with the labor consultant and I talked to people who've had investigations done in the past. And these people were highly recommended. They've done that before. I needed someone who would understand the issues and be able to do it for them. Because we had people going out on leave and it needed to be done quickly. And the longer we waited, the, you know, the, the worse things get, I guess. No, I don't want to say it that way. The longer you wait, the more potential there is for confusion or anything like that.
Okay, and I would like to go into that a little bit later. But I'm concentrating right now on the memo you disseminated to department heads on this specific issue. So in your memo, you specifically state that there needs to be a written scope of work to be performed. Where was that in the document that you signed with Baker-Dublecar?
I don't know.
But there wasn't one, was there?
I don't have the form in front of me. I'm, I'm sure it alludes to it.
Well, the extent of what it says, I'd be happy to read it here, is, "Thank you for selecting Baker-Dublecar, Beck, Wiley &amp; Matthews to represent the City of Alliance in connection with an investigation regarding certain police actions. This letter confirms our agreement as to the terms of our engagement."
There's, there's a scope right there. That was scope up there.
So how many hours were they to work?
What was needed? We did have a, we, we had a, we had a cap on that.
There's no cap in this document.
Okay, it doesn't need to be in that document?
There's no limit to the number of hours that they would work? No, there's not.
The document I saw had a limit to the amount.
Well, handwritten at the bottom, it says, "Please notify me before cost reaches $10,000." I wouldn't interpret that as a limit. But regardless, that's not in the body of the contract or the letter of engagement.
It's, it's part of the contract.
Not exactly, because it's not in the document that they wrote. There are no terms...
It's in the document I signed.
No, that, it's an addition that you made, right? The document that you signed does not have a written scope of work as is demanded in your own memo's department.
Yes, it does.
Okay, let's, let's, this is going to be a cross-examination more than a question and answer period. As a question, I think you have given him some of those. Please get a little more succinct with that.
How was Baker-Dublecar to communicate the results of their work to you?
To report.
Do you have that report?
It was a verbal report.
So who did they answer to? To you or to the law director?
They answered to me ultimately, yeah. But I mean, they've been in discussions with the law director.
Okay. And this contract never went before the Board of Control, right?
No, but it's not, it's not a big contract either.
Well, this contract was also never...
Oh, yes, it did go through the Board of Control. I'm sorry, yes, it did.
When did it go through the Board of Control?
I don't have the minutes.
Well, I can assure you actually, because I looked through all of the minutes, it's not there.
Should have been the day it was signed. I don't want to answer for him, but if I could help him, it should have been the day it was signed. It was a Friday, wasn't it?
It's possible.
Well...
What, what minutes, what, it would have been in this month. But yes, it did go through Board of Control.
But nobody can tell me when. And I, I, I literally sat at City Hall in the front lobby with a binder full of minutes for the past five years, and there's nothing about this.
I don't know how, I don't know how often she types them up, but I know that they put it through Board of Control. So you can go back and you can ask Ms. Chris for the minutes for that day because I'm positive that it went through Board of Control. Because I left the room so that they could do it, because I'm not a member of the Board of Control.
Well, this contract was, even if, we'll pretend that it was executed by the Board of Control, it never came before council, right?
No, it didn't come before council.
But previously, when we entered into contracts for legal services, that did require an ordinance?
Previously, it did for what legal services? I mean, it's been done, it depends on what the contract was.
For instance, when we had a contract with Bob Shoal, every two years, there was an ordinance that came before council to ratify that contract.
It's possible.
Why are we not doing that now?
That's not the procedure that was in place when I got here. It's not necessary. I mean, I, we can talk about all kinds of procedures that were one-way. And then what happens is the auditors come in, they review what we do, we modify things, we adjust what we do.
So just to be clear then, under, under your leadership, it was no longer the policy that council needed to ratify contracts for legal services?
It was actually, it actually preceded me, but I haven't changed it.
And you've never abided by it either, right?
Never abided by what?
A policy to have council ratify contracts for legal services.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to guess that there, there may have been some. It depends on the case.
But you have no idea, right?
If council's necessary, no idea of what?
Whether or not council has ratified contracts for legal services or whether it's...
Oh, no, I'm sure they have. Actually, I know that council has ratified contracts for legal services.
Well, did you know that prior to me just saying that?
Yes.
What, what contracts did we ratify?
Bob Shoal, you brought that one up, but we have ratified, we've ratified. I don't, I don't know the history of the last 35 years or 40 years, but yes, we've done that.
Well, you just indicated to me that you were aware that this was a policy, that this was something that we do.
What is a policy?
That city council ratifies contracts for legal services.
That doesn't make it a policy. There are cases when I believe city council must ratify contracts for legal services. There are others where they don't. There are times when we bring things to you with ordinances and have you approve them even though it's not necessary to do that.
And what cases are there where city council does not have to ratify a contract for legal services?
And when it's less than $50,000.
And you have specific case law on that?
No. I followed the advice of the auditor and the law director.
That's right.
So, so you were advised by the law director on all of this?
He actually would have been the fire law director.
I'm talking about the last six months.
The last six months of what? We are operating under contract that has been in place since twenty-four.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, back in the eighties, I worked about it as long. I do believe they have some, when you said, do they have authority? I think there was a cap limit of fifteen thousand was the limit that we didn't have to come through council. I mean, that was part of the lump for fifteen K. And that letter states ten thousand, let me know before.
But that was an expenditure, not a contract. There's a difference.
I understand, but the contract or even that expenditure, then in the audit system, that was like the written law, if the, we said in the audit system, we can't go over fifteen thousand. That was just like a contract. I understand what you're saying. In twenty sixteen, yes, it should be written and policy should be in place, and there's things that we need to do to actually put it on paper.
And Ms. Chair, you're absolutely right. It was fifteen thousand dollars, but the law changed, and it is not fifteen thousand dollars anymore.
So, the policies need to be changed and written so that we all have the same information?
It's not so much policy as what case law tells us has to happen, and, and that's my concern here. But apparently, I'm not going to be able to get anywhere, so save the rest of my questions for the law director.
Other questions from others? Mr. Everett?
I just have one question, Mike. Policy, as far as the whole city or per departments, say someone's out on leave, sick leave or, or surgery leave, and when they come back, they could be assigned to light duty or do they have to wait until they're completely ready to do that job, any phase of that job, before they come back?
If, if it was an injury on duty, if it's injury on duty, if, if the, if the reason they're off is related to that, then it would automatically be looked at light duty. It is full duty typically. To some degree, it can depend on the person. And if they have something specialized that they do that we need to have back, we may allow to do that. With all the cases, what we do is whatever they're coming back to be able to do, that job description goes to their doctor so that he can verify that they can do the specific things we're going to have them do.
And, and just one follow, did I guess you say there's something you would, and so it's kind of like up to the department head, what, what work that they would like to assign them to do when they come back?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I would expect that I would know about that, but, but, to a large degree, it's going to be the full, the full assignment of what goes with their job description and their title. Like I say, the biggest exception would be if we have somebody who does something that maybe they're the only one in the department that can do. Particularly if it's getting backlog.
Thank you.
All right, any other members of council have questions for Mr. Drager?
It's, it's just a comment. I hope we're not going to go as judge and jury all night tonight that we have legislation to be doing, and we have a finding situation in our city that we seem to be forgetting about. And I hope that somewhere along the line, we can get caught up in that instead of some of these other things.
Mr. Dory, you have another question?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I do. Are you familiar with Ohio Advice Code 13903?
Not off the top of my head.
It's called Issuance of Departmental Regulations. It was passed by Alliance City Ordinance on nineteen eighty-five. And it says, "The Director of Public Safety and Service may, from time to time, issue regulations or rules for the operation of any department under his control. The Director shall notify council of his attentions to issue or amend any rules or regulations. Any such proposed regulation shall become effective thirty days after the date of the Director's notice to council. Any regulations or rules shall have the full force of law in effect until they're either repealed or amended by the Director or council." So, my question is, when you placed a gag order on the Alliance Police Department, whose authority did you have to do that?
I didn't place it on the Alliance Police Department, I, I did it. I'm assuming you're talking about the two administrative orders.
Well, I'm telling you, I'm aware that, that for a long time, Alliance Police officers, if they're talking to me, have to report back to you. Or at least that's what they say.
They have to tell the chief about it.
So, I'm asking you, whatever rule you think you did, since you didn't go through us, why don't you repeal it right now?
I don't have, I don't know what rule you're talking about. And again, anything that I have put into place, I have had advice that it's correct. I understand you pulled something and you're reading it. I think you know it gets more complicated than that.
Well, if, and I'll tell you this, if we don't get this thing repealed, it is going to get more complicated. And I appreciate what you said because whenever an investigation is conducted and the, and the, and the attention is more on the investigators than those to be investigated, then something's screwed up. And we're sitting here in a screwed up mess.